Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Always wanted to do that. Good afternoon, I'm Mayor Buddy Dyer and I'd like to welcome you to the Monday, May 23rd, 2011 regularly scheduled meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're gonna begin today's proceedings with our invocation, and that will be offered by my good friend Pastor William Andrews of Heart of Mercy Community Church of the Nazarene, which is located on Mercy Drive in District 5. And the church was established back in June of 2003. It's been in partnership with my church, First Prez, and has a jobs partnership to provide a biblical-based employment program, and it also provides transportation for 65 children who attend Ivy Lane Elementary School and conducts mentoring and after-school tutoring for K-5 students and its Mercy Drive Achievers Club. Pastor Andrews serves on the Board of Directors of the Coalition for the Homeless and served on the interim Regional Commission of Homelessness back in 2007 after the invocation. Fledge of Allegiance will be offered today by District 6 Commissioner Sam Ings. Would everybody please rise?
Dear Lord, Heavenly Father, we're so grateful for an opportunity, Lord, that you have given the privilege to the men and women who are now serving as leaders of this community. We ask, dear Lord, that you would give them wisdom and discernment that even the least of them may be touched by the decisions and choices they make. With so much misery in the world, Lord, that the leaders, as well as leaders throughout the world, are able to have an impact in their decisions and the choices they make that can touch the least of them. I ask, Lord, that as this meeting is done here today, that you will be blessed and that you will be honored, and that you would give them the discernment that's needed and the choices and decisions they make that will be for the benefit of the total community as a whole, where you receive all the glory, and this we pray. And thank you, dear Lord, for the blessings that you will bestow upon this meeting. Amen. The flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Andrews. Now call the meeting to order. Madam Clark, would you call the roll and make a determination of a quorum, please?
Commissioner Diamond?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan?
Here.
Commissioner Linum?
Here.
Commissioner Ings?
Here.
Mayor Dyer?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clark. First order of business would be the consideration of the minutes from the May 9th, 2011 City Council meeting. Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Ings, all in favor of the motion indicates by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So the motion carries. We have one recognition, but unfortunately, our 25-year service award recipient is not with us today, so we will carry that over to the next council meeting, and that just brings us right to the mayor's update. And first, I'd like to acknowledge, let's see, I could just about go through the entire audience, there's so many notables that are in attendance today, but let me call out a three. We have the chairman of the Orange County School Board, Bill Sublett, who is with us today, and he's a member of DPAC. Let's see, Mayor Bill Frederick is here with us today, former mayor of Orlando. Geraldine Thompson, who is a great state representative for us, Geraldine. And then Jim Pugh and the entire DPAC board, I'm pretty sure I know which items they are here for. Thank you for being here. Were there any other elected officials that I have missed? Where's Linda? Ah, way in the back. I can't read, is that Fox that you're in front of there? Okay, the first Orange County Mayor, Linda Chapin. The Chair of our O-triple-C and President of the Magic, Alex Martins. Chair of our Oversight Committee, Greg Lee, and other members of the Oversight Committee. All right, I'll hit a couple more, and then anybody that wants to be introduced, raise their hand. Jacob Stewart from the Central Florida Partnership, Jacob does a great job. And I see Margot Knight with United Arts out there. And everybody in attendance today is notable, and you're gonna be here for what I hope is a very historic day in the city of Orlando. So I'm gonna quickly update you on a couple of things before we get down to business. We had the Mayor's Neighborhood and Community Summit on Saturday, May 14th, it was the sixth annual, we had almost 300 community and neighborhood leaders there, and I presented the first-ever Community Builder Award to Julie Coleman of the Orlando School of Cultural Dance, and then the first-ever Neighborhood Champion Award went to Tom Galley, who is a proud District 2 resident and president of the Inglewood Park Neighborhood Association. Many of the commissioners were in attendance last week at a forum that the city put on in collaboration with UCF and the University of Florida titled Orlando: Choosing Our Future After the Great Recession, so I want to thank you for attending, it was a very worthwhile, and I thought, educational event. Greg Ip, who is the US Economics Editor of The Economist, spoke, and our partners at UF will be putting a, I guess, a post-event document together that analyzes the information that was conveyed there, but it was pretty thought-provoking information. Last week was Small Business Week, and we always want to note that they make up the majority of our workforce in the city and across America, and as we all talk about creating new jobs, we know that almost 80% of all new jobs originate in businesses of 20 employees or less, and 93% of the businesses in the city of Orlando have less than 50 employees, so we are a city of small businesses. May the 25th, I did not invite everybody out to the Orlando City Soccer Game, and we will honor and pay tribute to our military. There aren't a whole lot of things that are first for me after I've been in office for eight years or so, but this is a first. I will, at halftime, be swearing in 76 future soldiers who have enlisted and will be going off to basic training, and the entire event is devoted to honoring our military, the pre-game, the halftime, and the entire game itself, and the Orlando City Club will be taking on the Richmond Kickers, and our team is, I think they're 6-1-1, so they're having a pretty good year already. So if you, there are two-for-one ticket specials for everybody with a valid military ID, or cadets, or anybody in uniform, orlando citiesoccer.com. May, the, May 2011 is Neurofibromatosis Awareness Month. I got that out and got it right, better known, I suppose, as NF. 120,000 Americans have NF, and one out of every 3,000 newborns were to develop the disorder. Mayor Brooks is a real champion of this cause, and the Children's Tumor Foundation leads the efforts in funding. This morning, we had a workshop and an extensive discussion on something that we have been discussing in our community for the better part of 20 years, and that's a new world-class performing arts center. Byron, Rebecca, and Trey from PCL walked us through the work of the city, of DPAC, actually worked starting all the way back when Mayor Frederick first laid out a master plan for this city hall that included a site for a performing arts center across the way. Mayor Hood carried the torch for 11 years. Dick Nunes and UCF carried that torch a little farther and handed it to Jim Pugh, and the DPAC board has taken it on now for eight years, culminating in today, and we will be voting on a GMP and several assorted other things on our consent agenda. And we laid out a plan that is very prudent financially. It has a Plan A and a Plan B, and Plan A relies on tourist development tax projections that would cover about $43 million of the cost of construction, and Plan B relies on no tourist development tax except the $9.6 million that we already have. So we anticipate Plan A is what we'll be utilizing, but I think it is always prudent to have a Plan B in the event we have another event that would cause the tourist development tax not to be materialized in the fashion that we expect that it will. So Plan B would fill the $43 million gap with, by utilizing the, what do we call it? The inter-local TDT reserve, which is not city general funds, it's a reserve that was set up in 2007 as part of the inter-local agreement that would allow us to bond tourist development tax in the event we have tourist development tax. So if we have a situation where over the next four years, there is no TDT, then we don't need the reserve to bond off of, so we could utilize that 25 million. So if you're doing your addition and subtraction, that leaves $16 million as a funding gap. The DPAC board, led by Jim Pugh, Chuck Craig, Mayor Bill, and Dr. Phillips Foundation have provided letters of credit that will be available and guaranteed by the DPAC board to fill that remaining $16 million, and that is a statement of support that I think is unrivaled in anything that we've done in this community before, that and the charitable fundraiser, philanthropic fundraising that has occurred up to this date, there has been unrivaled in anything that we have ever done in our community. And I am extremely proud of them. We've had a lot of hurdles along the way, a lot of bumps, more than I could ever imagine or even have created if I was trying to imagine some of the bumps, and there are five items that are on our consent agenda that will allow us to move forward with a groundbreaking next month. So with that, we will come to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda, like I said, contains those five items, in addition to a number of other items that will all be acted upon through a single vote. There is an item, let's see, C2, number four, which we have moved to new business, so Commissioner Diamond can make an amendment to that, but the rest of the consent agenda, we will take up as one, and we give each of the commissioners an opportunity to comment on the consent agenda and update you, as I did, on issues in their districts, and we rotate who gets to go first out of an abundance of fairness here, so it is Commissioner Ings' turn, so I will turn it over to you, Commissioner Ings.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll just start with the agenda, the consent agenda. Item D2, this is the Family Parks Recreation Department in applying for Orlando to renew its Playful City USA designation, and this is an opportunity too for us to look at certain parks within our districts as well, specifically Lake Richmond Park on Prince Hall Boulevard. It's a park, it looks nice, but it does not have any amenities. The kids, the families would like to have something to do within that park, and providing a kaboom playground would be a great opportunity, and this will provide a safe environment for our kids and also another fun place for our kids to have. And then also on item G7, as relates with the construction services for the Dr. Phillips Performing Arts Center, and I'd like to specifically say thanks to, and I call them now the big three, Mayor Bill Frederick and Jim Pugh and Chuck?
Steinets.
Steinets.
And add Craig Usler and Dr. Phillips in there, too.
Are they writing checks, too?
Well, they're not writing, well, one of them's already written a $25 million check, so that's pretty good, but...
I like that.
They're on those guarantees, too.
All right, Mayor, we'll add them in, too, but, you know, it's really commendable on their part to step forward and to help fill the gap if we do have a shortfall. I'm just thinking that we're gonna move forward and you guys won't have to write the check, but I thank you for really stepping up and doing that for our community. And then also item H4, the 2011 COPS Hiring Program. Specifically, this gives us an opportunity for four additional police officers within the Police Department, and it will help with our community policing capacity as well as crime prevention efforts. And then straight into the, into the district, Ed, if you can assist me, please. On Friday, April 29th, 2011, I hosted my third annual District 6 Spring to Health Bingo Social and Health Fair at the L. Claudia Allen Senior Center. Four local senior centers participated in this bingo tournament, including L. Claudia Allen Center, Rosemont, Callahan, and Rock Lake. Rosemont was the first-place bingo tournament winner for the second year in a row, and L. Claudia Allen was the second-place winner. Health screenings were provided to our seniors, including blood pressure, glucose, cholesterol, spinal vein, diabetic foot checks, to name a few. The participating vendors were Clonel Chiropractic and Rehabilitation Center, Florida Clinical Research, Community Home Health, Life Care of Florida, the Center for Drug-Free Living, AmeriPlan, Hope &amp; Help Center of Central Florida, Vascular Vein Centers, Family Physicians Group, WellCare, and I'd like to give a special thanks to Angela Fernandez, the Physicians, Family Physicians Group, Herb Williams, and Brenda Clark, the managers at the L. Claudia Allen Center. This health fair and spring to health event is very well attended by many of the seniors, and we look forward to having our seniors again next year. I think we had some problems with the slides, did we?
No.
They went through? Okay. And then also on Thursday, May 19th, I participated and was invited to come to the Florida Trust Historic Preservation Conference Opening Session, which was held at the Trinity Lutheran Church, 123 East Livingston Street. Thank you, Richard Forbes, for inviting me to be there. Also on hand was Mayor Dyer to give opening remarks, and State Representative Geraldine Thompson was on hand to give some remarks as well, and Secretary of State Kirk Browning was there to speak to the group. This was a group throughout the state of Florida, it was very well attended, and being in the Lutheran church for the first time is a beautiful church, and it speaks volume of our historic preservation, even in the church. And then Friday, May 20th, I attended a grand opening of Greens &amp; More, too, and this was at the Village Square on Goldwyn Avenue in District 6. Donnie Butler, a new business entrepreneur, was on hand to open up a new business there in the Village Square. Myself and Mayor Dyer also presented a proclamation to the business owners and encouraging them to stay involved in our commerce. And then on Saturday, May 22nd, I co-sponsored the first annual daycare prom for tots, and this was with the help of Annette Reed, Southwest Community Group. It was held at the Dr. James R. Smith Center. There were three different home daycare businesses that were attending, and there were children, I think over 30 children were involved in this event, and they had a graduation also from the daycare, and crowned king and queens for the responsive daycare operations. So this was a great event, and it was something good to be involved in with the community. And then also on Saturday at 7:00 PM, the Night of Gratitude Program was held at Christ Sanctified Church at 57, 17 North Pine Hills Road here in Orlando, and this was hosted by the Christian Coalition of Haitian Pastors. I was given an award for my help and assistance in dealing with the Haitians specifically during the January 12th event concerning the earthquake in Haiti, and I've hosted a couple of town hall meetings right here in City Hall to help the Haitian people and to be of service to the Haitian community. And Reginald McGill of the mayor's office was also on hand to receive an award. Local leaders were also recognized, Commissioner Daisy Linum, Congresswoman Corrine Brown, and Florida State Senator Gary Siplin. And then on tomorrow, May 24th, from 11:30 to 12:30 PM, this was an original invitation by then OPD Chief Val Demings, but I'm sure that OPD Chief Paul Rooney will be on hand for the Second Annual Mobile Field Kitchen Roundup, and this will be held at the Pavilion at the Central Florida Fairgrounds, 4603 West Colonial Drive, and the local Central Florida Public Safety Agencies will be on hand to compete for the Golden Ladle Trophy, and each agency with a mobile field kitchen that will be competing will be judged by local celebrity and agency-ranking officials for the best meal. So please come out and enjoy and be involved, they will have a complimentary gourmet lunch available, and support our local law enforcement. And then also on Tuesday, tomorrow, 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and the Hispanic Business Investment Fund will have its open house at the National Entrepreneur Center, which is at the Orlando Fashion Square, and this will again take place at 5:00 PM. And then Wednesday, May 25th, I encourage all, specifically those within District 6, to come out and witness Cover Middle School's music department, they're having their 2011 Spring Showcase, and it will be at Jones High School. The ensembles will be the guitar, gospel choir, beginning band, jazz band, and the concert choir. Band Director Kedrick Redding and Principal Wayne Green will be on hand. And then on Saturday, May 28th, 2011, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and this is for those that are 55 and up, the attire is country western attire, and this is the ninth annual senior prom, a country western roundup, and this is hosted by the Rathman Club and the City of Orlando, L. Claudia Allen Senior Center is where the event will be held, and seating is limited, so RSVP by Friday, May 20th, which is gone, but you still have an opportunity to participate. And then, of course, on June 1st, from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM, the Dr. Phillips Flag Football Team will host this banquet that will be held in District 6 at Metro West Country Club. Officer Kevin Williams is there to assist. They were state champions, and we're gonna be on hand to salute them and encourage them to continue, and that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Move to District 1, Commissioner Diamond.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I've got a few things to mention today, some things in the district, a couple of items, actually one item I'll mention on the agenda, and then we'll talk about the Performing Arts I do want to give special thanks today to some of the folks from Planning and Economic Development for their work in item C2, which the mayor mentioned, for those of you who are interested, that's a redevelopment that'll be happening on South Orange Avenue, the old Checkers Restaurant, it's gonna turn into a Bank United, and as part of that, we'll be widening the sidewalk down there, trying to work on our overall vision plan to make people safer when they walk, encourage people, more people to walk, and I want to thank several people from the staff who really did a very nice job on making that happen, that would be Kevin Edmonds, Dean Grandin, Brooke Bonnet, Mark Checkman, Linda Ryan Smith, and Jenny Wheelock, they did a very nice job, and this is the first of many steps we're gonna take to make that area safer and better and a more attractive place to do business, so give a special thanks to them. Some things around the district and the community I'll mention, on May 12th, at the Orlando International Airport, I cut the ribbon for the new Build-A-Bear franchise that is there. It's good to see that, it's good to see folks going into the airport to do business, and hopefully it's a sign of more good things to come at the airport and in the community at large. I'm sure Commissioner Ortiz will mention the next one, but I just want to give a special shout-out to him and all the folks at the Semeron Business Partnership. They had a good, a very good meeting, I might say, on the 19th. The mayor was there, and I just have to compliment you, even though the meeting was in my district, I know for the most part that that partnership focuses on Commissioner Ortiz, your district, but they really are doing a great job getting excited about doing some things to improve the area, and I'm sure you'll talk about it some more, but I just want to give a shout-out to you and all the volunteers. Also a shout-out, that same night, downtown south continues to be strong, the Main Street Group down there, working to make that a better area, and I want to thank everybody involved in that. And then also, the night before, I was able to attend the ribbon-cutting for the Fringe Festival, and Commissioner Sheehan presented a proclamation, and it was good to see that going strong again. And also compliments to those who were responsible for the neighborhood, putting on the Neighborhood and Community Summit a couple of weekends ago, and the Economic Summit last week. Moving on to items G3 through G7, which is the Performing Arts Center. I'd first of all like to thank everybody who's worked so hard on this, especially those who have volunteered their time or made contributions and stepped up to help us out. I think the idea of a new Performing Arts Center is very popular within our community, I think it could do a lot of good things in our community, and frankly, this is one of the more difficult decisions I've faced during my time on the council, and let me, let me explain why. Even though I like the idea very much, I am very concerned about the details of this plan, not just, not just now, but in the future, and how it's gonna impact me, or how it's gonna impact the city. My concerns are really twofold, first of all, on the construction side, and then, second of all, on the operations side. On the construction side, I think the contingency is too small. I think that's especially true here, where you've got a number of items which I think people would like to add into the project, and even though there will be an effort, I'm sure, to fundraise for those, I think that will add to the complications. I think overall, when you look around the country at performing arts centers that have been built, I think unfortunately, since they are so difficult to build, you have issues with them which are not anticipated and which somebody has to pay for. I'm also concerned about the operations side of this. When you look at the record in Miami, where the city of Miami, or the county, I should say Miami-Dade County, is spending $7.5 million a year to subsidize the center, excuse me, on top of the $7 million a year raised privately, that gives me concern about the future numbers going forward in Orlando. What does that mean for us? Well, I think what it means is a couple of things. First of all, we're gonna find out this week that the tax base in the city of Orlando has dropped again. Hopefully not by much, but my understanding is that every city's property tax base has gone down this year, except for one, which unfortunately is not Orlando. Excuse me. I think also, when you look at what that, what that means for us, and you look at some of the recent, some of the recent, recent operations of other venues like the new Amway Center, you'll see that the Amway Center has lost money for the first six or seven months of the year. You'll also see that the city has had to dip into bond reserves to pay the interest on the arena bonds, which were at one time rated as junk bonds. That all gives me pause, because I think we hear about projects, we like projects, but ultimately, we have to pay for them, and even though, excuse me, even though I like this, I'm concerned that we're gonna... to be in a posture where the city's going to be asked to raise taxes, cut services to neighborhoods, or pay for this project when projections don't meet reality. And that is my concern today. Again, even though I like it, I think, I think these are things we haven't really discussed, and I think these are things that we're going to be faced with. And therefore, because of my concern about those items, I am going to vote no on Items G3 through G7. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clark, Commissioner Diamond has a no vote on G3 through 7. Commissioner Ortiz, you're up.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to be very short, because I know everybody's excited to hear this pass, so I'm just going to make a quick comment. The city can prosper, no city can prosper without a first-class, to become a first-class status, without the intellectual component, as I said before. And that intellectual component is given to us by the arts. You see the big cities around the world, they're all big in art. And I do have faith that it's going to be sustainable. I've seen what had happened with the Amway Center. We went from an Amway Arena to an Amway Center, and we have seen concerts, games, we have seen all kinds of functions here that have helped our economy locally. I have the same faith in reference to our Dr. Phillips Performing Arts. And I just want to add to that, to Mr. Jim Pugh, to Mayor Frederick, to Mr. Steinmetz, and Mr. Hustler and Dr. Phillips this time, that your actions do, they're a statement of trust and commitment to our community. We're very appreciative. It's going to be a legacy. And let's go ahead and pass this. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. It is, let me cover a couple of quick things and make some other comments. First of all, let me just kind of share this. Our hearts go out to those people who, when we woke up this morning, saw a, some, another weather disaster in the Midwest. We often think about how important the things that we do here are, and they are. But we have people who are suffering even as we speak. So I'd like to kind of ask you to remember them, please, as we begin to deliberate that sometimes there are things that are very important, and sometimes there are things that are the most important. So let's remember that in our prayers tonight. A couple of quick congratulations, one to the Orlando Science Schools in District 3, the charter school that I'm so impressed with. They have just completed and came in second in the state, and now have qualified for a trip to Wisconsin to be part of the National Science Olympiad, coming out of Lululeah, Orlando, Florida. I'm so pleased to see that happening. They came in second in the state of Florida, just really neat to see that group. And they've matured. I guess the charter school now is just under four years old. Memorial Day is coming up. We have an opportunity to take a moment on Monday to provide another chance to say thank you. And so I'm going to ask you, if you would, those in this chamber and those that are listening to us, to remember one minute of silence. If you will do that on Monday at 12:00 noon, to remember those soldiers who have died and sacrificed, so that we can be literally in this room. So if you'll do that for me, I would appreciate it. Now on to the big agenda. Let me express my personal thanks to a couple of people. And I just appreciate so much their friendship and so much the legacy that they have left this community. Mayor Bill, of course, always an honor to just call you my friend. Jim Pugh, Chuck Steinmetz, thank you for your work. Craig Hustler, Dr. Phillips Foundation and the work y'all have done. We would not be here today without a backup plan. And candidly, you've allowed us that luxury to accomplish that task. And I pray we don't have to use it. I think you probably do, too. But it speaks highly. It's one thing to sit on the committee and invest your time and your effort. It's one thing to talk a good game, but when you start putting down your hard-earned assets, it talks volumes in terms of the leadership that we have. And I want to tell you, thank you. Jim, thank you specifically for your leadership. Kathy, thank you for the work that you have done. You have been the heart of this, and I deeply appreciate that. There are also others that go on beyond, before this has occurred, and having a little bit of legacy in the city of Orlando. There are others that, I just want to make sure, I'm not going to mention them all, because if I mention one, I have to mention his name, and he's my brother, and it would be a real difficult thing for me to do that. But the thought of bringing our community together has been a 20- or 30-year journey, and today is the celebration of that. The next celebration, Steve, will be the Citrus Bowl. And when we accomplish that, what we will have accomplished is to be the premier location in the country, for anything from 100,000 people down to 300. And once we accomplish that, we will have sent ourselves onto another stratosphere for the city of Orlando. So Steve, thank you for your support personally. It means a lot to me and to us. And Mayor, with that, I want to tell you, I am enthusiastically in favor of Items G1, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, because I think the funding plan is strong, it is conservative, and I think it will accomplish that. I have said publicly as well, I have some concerns about the operation plan. But you know what? We've got a couple of years to work that out, and you know we will. And so because of that, I'm enthusiastically have my support for this, and I want to just tell you, let's get moving. Now, one last thing I forgot. I apologize. Rebecca and Byron, where are you guys? Thank you for your work. It means so much to us and to our city. I will tell you, I will bet you that your staff did a whole lot more work than you did. But you have been inspirational leaders inside City Hall. And I think for that, I want to tell you, thank you personally, and then extend my personal thanks to your staff that's worked on this. Because without that type of objective and diligent work that we've done, we wouldn't be here today. So thank you very much. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District 4, Commissioner Sheehan.
Thank you, Mayor. Don't worry, y'all, I'll go quick. On May 19th, I went to the Law Enforcement Awards. That's a salute to local law enforcement officers. That's why I didn't go, the Historic Trust Commission, and I'm glad you had us taken care of there. I think we just kind of switched. You went to Law, you went to Florida Trust, and I went to Law Enforcement, so that's a good thing. And that is a beautiful church, by the way. It's a shining star in District 4. But I want to salute our OPD winners. Officer Ben Chisari won the Valor and Heroism Award, Sergeant James Parker and Joker, the Canine Award, and Detective Jay Drayson, the Criminal Investigation Award. We're really proud of our officers winning these regional awards. On Saturday, Mayor Dyer and I went to the Dixon Azalea Cleanup. And thanks to Pastor Tim Johnson and World Outreach Church, we had 200 volunteers in the church. Jim Hunt, Evan and Devin Cantrell, Jan Rayhill, Jody Goose Tree, Tommy Cooper, and other city staff. I know Jim Hunt was carrying some awfully, awfully big logs out of that. I want to thank him and recognize him for that. And Mayor Dyer was actually bleaching the Washington Street Bridge, because it was all full of algae and looking kind of sad, so I want to thank you for that, too. And I did cut the ribbon at the Fringe Festival, 20-year tradition, running through Memorial Day. If you have a chance to go by and see Fringe, please do. It's wonderful this year. I've already had a chance to see a couple of performances, and they were a lot of fun. On the agenda, Items G1, G3 through G7, I vote yes, 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 yes. You know, I know that we've talked a lot today and this morning about what this means to our community, but, you know, yeah, it's not going to be easy. Yeah, you know, we don't have all the questions answered, but the bottom line is, if you, what did you say? If you dream, great dreams, Mayor. And this is what this is all about, is making a wonderful facility. I think we can be world-class in Orlando. I don't think we have to be a sleepy burg. I think that we can do great things, and we see great things happen, because our tourism industry has stood up, and people and leaders in our community have said that we deserve to have nice things. So I'm pleased, very pleased to support this. As a kid who came from Cleveland, Ohio, and saw a performance in Preservation Hall, to going to the Sanford Civic Center and seeing the Florida Symphony playing in folding chairs on a terrazzo floor, yes, the venue does make a difference. So I'm delighted to be a part of this and to vote on this. And as an adult, as a child, seeing the difference between seeing a performance in a wonderful hall and a not-so-great hall, and as an adult now, being able to make that happen for other children. And I know that's what you all are here about, too. It's an amazing opportunity, and I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for letting me support this vision that you have all had for all these years. And Mayor Bill, I'm going to call you out again, wow, what an amazing day for all of us, and your leadership and everyone else in the room. There's too many of you all to thank, you know who you are, but I thank you from the bottom of my heart. This is a momentous day in the city of Orlando, and I'm so pleased to be here to support this. On Item H3, the police camera systems are going to be there for Lake Como Elementary School, delighted to see that. And on Item H4, the cops grant four additional police officers for community policing. That's going to be great for our community as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheehan. And we'll move to District 5, Commissioner Linum.
Thank you, Mayor, and council, and ladies and gentlemen. The mayor mentioned some of his notables. I thought I will have a little fun and mention some of the notables from my district. I either work there or live there. The first one is Bakari Burns. He's a notable at the Health Center, Bakari. And he's here on Agenda 6, C6? Bakari, I see Bakari's head over there. Irma Green, President of the Willows, over to my left. Thank you, Irma. Ganesh, representing some of the small businesses, sitting right there behind three rows back. These are my notables. Bob Burns was here this morning. I can't see everybody. I can only see shapes of heads, and if I can't remember the shape of your head, I may not get you. Candy Crawford, who is the Executive Director for Central Florida Mental Health Association. And don't forget, we're having Patrick Kennedy here on June 17th at 11:30. And Candy used to work for the city of Orlando, great, great, great friend, and it's at the downtown Sheraton. When I hear that, I'm like, where is that? It's the old Marriott. I still call it the Marriott. And of course, the best cameraman in TV history, T., Mr. T., on the camera back there, raised much hell in District 5. Hey, he's one of my constituents. I know my constituents from a mile away. I know the shape of his head. And one of the best police officers, Kevin. I saw Kevin take off after those people, so Kevin, don't let any harm come to us. These are my notables. If there's some more of you, oh, Willie Clark is here. I can't remember the shape of his head. He may not work in District 5 either, but Willie and Carolyn Fennell, whom I grew up with. I don't see her, but Sam says she's here. Oh, there she is. Oh, both of them. Thank you for being here. But you know, before going to the agenda, another notable that I've had the greatest time working with for the Event Center is a notable who works in District 5, and that's Alex Martins. And we'll talk about him later, but we had a great time with the Event Center and all the work. And if we have half as much time as we did, as good a time on the Dr. Phillips Center, it's going to be, Alex, I hate to say it, it's going to be higher. I won't tell anybody, but it may be higher than the Event Center. Sorry. But it's good. And this past week, we had a great MEAC and SWAC meeting. We're getting ready for the MEAC and SWAC game on September 4th, and I think Bethune-Cookman is going to play in that game with somebody else. I don't remember who they are, but I just want to mention that for the future and things that we're going to do. To the agenda, and I did, on B10, I don't know whether drafts is here, they don't have to be, but just glad to see that business operating across from the new Event Center. I'm just excited about it. When I leave here, I'm sure everybody's going to be tired. Y'all need a drink? Let's go over to drafts. So, did the preacher leave? Preacher's gone. And of course, Bakari is here on C6 regarding the parking, and I want to thank our staff for making that possible. And I'm hoping we can work with you to buy that part of the parliament property so that it becomes permanent parking, so when I walk along there every morning, I don't have to call McRosa 100 times. But it's right for the Health Center, it's right for, if we can get them to do that. So anybody who can help us, it'll be good for you, Bakari. And I'm hoping Lila hears us, so if there are any CWG funds, we can push them that way. Thank you. And for I4, Rick Howard, I really want to express our sincere appreciation, because I did mention State Representative Geraldine Thompson, who is a notable all by herself. I was having a little fun with my list, but from the beginning of dealing with the Event Center, I have worked on the parking situation there. And one of the things we were going to do was improve, this is a city parking lot, it doesn't belong to Wellsville, but we are about to improve the parking. I talked with you about it early on, so Rick Howard and all the public works people, thank you very, very much. It's going to happen. And I'm hoping we can get with Ms. Hawkins where we can improve that piece on the other side. I saw Alan somewhere. We can improve that one, too. So just want you to know, Representative, that that's what's going down. Now for the other agenda items that everybody is here for. A few years ago, I had a meeting with Byron Brooks, and Byron with Mayor Dyer. And for months and months, we planned something, and we didn't tell anyone, because we, it was new and different, and we weren't sure how it would work. But in that process, what we did is reached out to the community, to people who were experts in MWBE services. And I asked the mayor, once we've worked on this over six months, I think, almost in private, sort of with Byron and Kevin, we took off on a road trip, and Commissioner Eames invited himself alone, with Kevin Edwards, Frank Billensley, and some of the magic people. And then later, Kathy took us on a spin with the NAACP and other locals. What I'm talking about was the blueprint, and let me assure you that this was new and different, but Mayor Dyer. And then later, we talked to the council, posted meetings, and the entire council was in agreement. Excuse Ms. Bracy? I think there are two seats down here. Okay. Well, she was, there's a seat. Okay, another notable. And the wonderful thing about this is that we went traveling for theaters and performing arts centers. We went traveling for the Event Center arenas around the country, Reverend Bracy, Reverend Burns, I think Pastor McKnight, Bernice Atkins Bradley with Turner. And I believe, working with Kevin and Frank and the other Kevin, Walsh, we put together a great document called the Blueprint. And I know, with the exception of a few glitches, it was a great success with the Event Center. I was really teasing Alex, because the Event Center people, the Dr. Phillips Performing Arts Center, and the Citrus Bowl folks are all happy about each of the facilities. I mean, there seems to be a seamless piece. It's not, you just keep crossing and interacting. And I want to express my thanks and appreciation for 177 minority contractors on the Event Center. We may not get 177 or whatever that number was, Alex, but thanks to Veronica Anderson, who is a notable, I'm kidding. She really helped Val for BD pull this thing up to 39% minority and women-owned businesses. That is beyond any of our expectations, so I have to say all of that to let you know. This is the right thing to do, and it doesn't mean I don't have concerns about the future and the funding. But right now, there is an economy that presses on my heart, and ever since I've been here, the importance of jobs. I am relentless, unrelentless in jobs and job opportunities and equity and participation. I am, I suppose at some point it may be my legacy. And particularly in District 5, where there's been a real push to change paramore to its former middle-class status. And in order to do that, these small businesses need the jobs. It's about jobs today, pre-construction, a couple of years ago, construction jobs and post-construction jobs, and maintenance and operation jobs. That's what it's about for this community. I believe, in my district, I have gotten very positive feedback, because people need these jobs. And I want to thank Gennaro and all of the staff with Byron, Kevin, and so many of you. It's hard to say, since the mayor's already dealt with Dr. Phillips' group. I'm saying, I thank you, because some business is going to be saved, and it's worth the risk for me. Some people say, well, it's worth the risk for me, as a legislator on this desk, to vote today in support of this great... today in support of this great facility. So I join the other commissioners and Mayor Dyer, who's been a great partner with me, and as we've gone about the community and around the country, talking about this, and everybody knows, when it comes to the blueprint, there's been no space between the end and the mayor. You jump your butt just as quick as I would if you mess up. So I'm voting for it, and I think that's the end of my comments, unless another notable from my district comes in. If you call out the name, I'll raise a hand, you know how we used to do a long time ago. I'll point you out to the rest of the dais that you are a notable from District 5, either work there or live there. Thank you very much, and let's look to the future.
Is there a motion to approve the consent?
There is a motion.
Show Commissioner Linum making the motion, and everybody else that wants to be a seconder, including myself, as a second on the motion that excludes out item number C2, number 4, but includes items G3, G4, G5, G6, and G7. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye. Aye, those opposed? And so the motion carries, and G3 through G7 pass 6 to 1. Hey Kathy, don't go anywhere. All right, just quickly, a couple of things. I forget who I talked about this morning and who we talked about today, but the tourism community, we would not be here but for them pressing forward in 2007, can't say enough about them. And I mentioned this morning, let's not forget, our partners at Orange County, who are still our partners, Mayor Karate and Mayor Jacobs, and we intend to work together as we move these forward. And Kathy gave me a note that I could announce that Cirque du Soleil today is announcing a $250,000 gift to the Performing Arts Center. So there's that fundraising momentum for Stage 2 or the donor room or something. And I am pleased to announce that on Thursday, June 23rd, we will have a groundbreaking. So this is a pretty historic day, and I want to commemorate it somehow with a picture, but there's so many people here. Ed, I don't think we can do it in chambers, so what I'm thinking is, everybody who is a supporter of the Dr. Phillips Performing Arts Center, we're going to take a recess and we'll go down into the rotunda, and I think you can capture everybody, if you stay up here, Ed, on the second floor, and take a picture of everybody downstairs. So without objection, we're going to recess the meeting and convene for a picture down in the rotunda. And that includes city staff as well.
It started with an idea. Orlando, a city whose history had been defined for so long by its visitors, deserved a better class of sporting and entertainment venues designed specifically for the benefit of its residents. Through an historic partnership, the Central Florida community came together to support the construction of three world-class community venues. More than mere building, these venues would be icons of civic identity and pride. They would be places to create shared memories with friends and loved ones, and economic engines to continue the revitalization of downtown Orlando, help diversify the economy, and bring the next generation of careers to Central Florida. But this journey to make history wouldn't be easy. As crews broke ground on the Amway Center, America's economy began to falter. Jobs disappeared, the housing market slumped, tourism slowed. As Orlando fought the effects of recession, construction on the Amway Center became a lifeline for many in this economic storm, creating and saving jobs and keeping businesses afloat. In spite of it all, the community rose to the challenge and stayed the course. Now, as Central Floridians take their first steps into this new building, our entire region is taking steps towards recovery and toward a new era for Orlando. I'm Mayor Buddy Dyer. As we open the Amway Center, we also pause to recognize the hard work by so many people in our community to make this facility and all it means for our future a reality. When we created the vision for the venues, we also created a shared vision for the future of our city. While we are proudly the world's leading tourist destination, we also want to be the best place on earth to live, work, learn, and raise a family. A place where the revitalized downtown, a place where the quality of life unrivaled anywhere, a place with careers of the future, and a sense of the past, a place with sports, entertainment, and arts amenities second to none. That future begins here and now. Orlando, it's time to experience your Amway Center.
We're out with the Simran Boulevard Business Community, cleaning up the trash on Simran Boulevard. Commissioner Ortiz has been a great leader out here and has a great vision for this corridor, and we're going to make it one of the best areas in our city.
This is a great synergy and working opportunity between the city, the county, the people in this community taking ownership. I couldn't be more tickled to be here.
Today, we're going to clean up Simran, and tomorrow, who knows?
We wanted to teach our kids that it's not just about our school, but it's about taking ownership of our community and really teaching them those values that are going to make them be a successful individual when they get older.
We have to begin somewhere. We don't have a lot of funds available at this moment, but there are a certain number of things that are within our control, such as what we're doing today, picking up litter.
The Business Council evolved to what is today the Semeron Business Partnership, and this is a result of it. We are working as a community together with the government, with the other institutions surrounding us, with other county commissioners and city commissioners, in order to revitalize the whole district.
The vision is, you know, a new Semeron, a vibrant and thriving destination, but that's going to cost a lot of money. We have to start somewhere.
It gives me great pleasure to inform you about the Orlando Speakers Bureau, another resource free of charge your city has to offer. Effective citizen communication is a key priority of my administration. The Speakers Bureau is just one of many tools we use to keep citizens informed, engaged, and knowledgeable about city government. I encourage you to utilize our Speakers Bureau at your next meeting or event. For more information and a list of speaker topics, please contact the Office of Communications and Neighborhood Relations at 407-246-2169, or visit our website, citioorlando.net.
This is Park of the Americas, and what we have here is, we are cleaning the park, we're fixing the park. This park is one of our iconic places in the district. What we're trying to do is make it to where the families can come here, bring not only their kids, or bring their dogs. We're going to have a dog park, we're going to have a track where people will be able to walk around. And you see, the big problem we have is, it needed to be fixed, it needed to be revitalized. And as the old saying says, what needs to be done overnight, quick and a hurry, done right, you don't call the Air Force, you don't call the Navy, you don't call the Army, you call the Marines. And they're here today, 105 of them, to fix this park up.
Anything you're currently standing on stays in place. Only the area where we've already removed it gets taken out.
I'm here today at the park, we are doing a volunteer project. As you can see, everybody's pulling out stumps, we're redoing a new park. It's a great opportunity for us, seeing Marines and sailors come out here and give back to the community that gives us so much to us.
This is a great opportunity for all of them to come together and do some teamwork and help out the community as well.
We're fixing to go ahead and really make this park here a family park, and everybody from the district and the city will be able to enjoy it.
Help stop red light running. Go to StopOnRed.org to support intersection safety programs in your community. The life you save may be the one you love.
You know, by not shaving, I'm actually saving hundreds of gallons of water, but that doesn't mean I'm going without grooming, I'm just looking for more ways to go green. OUC wants your random acts of greenness, so upload your videos to OUC.com, they'll put it on Facebook, and then the one that gets the most votes will be in OUC's next conservation commercial.
OUC wants your random acts of greenness, so upload your video to OUC.com today, and you may be the star in OUC's next conservation commercial.
Downtown Credo partners with five charities that we know are making sustainable impact in the Orlando city. And so one of our partner charities is Green Up Orlando. So we came to Jenny and said, Jenny, how can we help you do what you're already doing? She said, we'd love some help doing some community organizing and making a difference in the Paramore neighborhood, and so we were on it. That's how we formed the partnership with Paramore Kids Zone, Boys and Girls Club. We've done some stuff with the Coalition for the Homeless, just getting people out, trying to help them live a life of meaning, impact, and community.
We like to give back to the community by recognizing those nonprofit organizations that are doing such a great job with moving this community forward. This is part of Lynx's goal to be a great community partner and giving back to our community.
You know, we've been through some very difficult economic times through our strength in Orlando program. One of the pillars is Orlando Cares, and it's promoting volunteerism throughout our community, and I can't think of a better time to volunteer than during tough economic times when you can't give money, you can certainly help your neighbor.
This wrap will be on our vehicle for the next 12 months until we go through the next cycle next year, recognizing the next group of nonprofits.
Thank you, Lynx, thank you, John Lewis, for giving small charities like our dignity, an opportunity that we can never afford.
District Two City Commissioner Tony Ortiz joined with community leaders, residents, businesses, and property owners of the Cimarron neighborhood to celebrate the groundbreaking of the new community wall to be constructed along the Cimarron Boulevard between Andorra Street and Casablanca Lane. The concrete block wall is part of the revitalization of the Cimarron Boulevard Vision Plan, a long-term guide for future improvements in the area. The new wall will enhance the appearance of the Cimarron Boulevard Business District, reduce traffic noise, and provide better security for Cimarron neighborhood residents. Construction is expected to be complete in July of 2011.
This is the official opening of the Airport Lakes Disc Golf Course, and it is a nine-hole course. Instead of swatting a ball into a hole with a club, we use high-tech flying discs, and we put them into a basket with chains that acts as a 360 backboard.
To do this down here is a great thing because it's just the perfect environment for it. I think you're going to love it here. I love going out on the dock with my kid and watching the planes land. This is one of those best-kept secrets in Orlando, this wonderful park.
Congrats to our FPNR staff and everybody that worked on this for being able to construct a course without taking down a single tree.
There are approximately 3,000 courses around the world, most of which are in the U.S., but Florida has somewhere in the neighborhood of about 73 courses, I believe, now.
It's going to be a great amenity for the park, it's going to be a great amenity for all the folks that are disc golf fans, it'll be a great amenity for the folks that want to start playing disc golf.
Good day. I encourage all of our neighborhood leaders and volunteers to attend our monthly Community Connections workshop, sponsored by the City of Orlando and Orange County Government. Community Connections workshops are free and offer training on how to successfully engage your neighbors and manage your neighborhood organization. Workshops are offered the second Saturday of each month. For more information or to register for a Community Connections workshop, please call the city's Office of Communications and Neighborhood Relations at (407) 246-2169. (407) 246-2169.
This is really a great day in the city of Orlando, and this commitment by Fifth Third Bank and Cahavanny and Homes really makes me proud to be part of our community. Dealing with the issue of homelessness presents the biggest challenge to our community because it is so complicated, and no two homeless peoples or people or families have the same story.
Knowing that, what do we do? Ignore the problem? Look the other way?
Okay, we will reconvene the city council meeting, and we are on CRA business, so having reconvened it, I will then recess it again for the CRA meeting and convene the CRA meeting, and there is one item which is accepting minutes from the March 23rd.
May I remove that? Second?
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Sheehan, all in favor of motion indicates so, by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. And for the business, oh, I didn't even see there, Devon. Anything to say for yourself, Devon? You're doing a great job.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
All right. Actually, give us, hey, Devon, give us one minute on SNAP.
Okay. Well, this year, in case you didn't have a chance to, to come out about two weeks ago, we had an event called SNAP. SNAP is a celebration of photography, and this is the second year that it's taken place in Orlando. We kicked off the event with a really special exhibition right at the Crest Building where we did some 3D projection technology. We've got a YouTube link that we could definitely like to share with you. And again, this was a five-day celebration of photography in the downtown area. The exhibitions, they all took place at the GAI Building in downtown, so there were classes open to the public, exhibitions, people just coming in to celebrate photography. And as Mayor Dyer alluded to, really the kickoff that was so special was this 3D projection that we did on the Crest Building. It was truly magical. It's basically a technology where you take, use 3D projection, and essentially you change the format of the building. So, if you just imagine the historic Crest Building right on Orange Avenue with this projection, it just simply came alive. People dancing, the images, people dancing in the, along the building, so it was truly, truly magical, and it really represents the type of technology that Orlando is destined to embrace as we develop the creative village as well, you know?
They made the building look like it was on fire. They made it look like it was-
Fire, snowing, there were-
Snowing, like-
People climbing.
The whole building was crumbling and falling down. It was pretty cool.
Absolutely.
Creator, who I've forgotten his name is-
Patrick Conne.
From LA, and he pulled me aside and said, you know, I live in LA, and it's nice, but downtown Orlando is far more hip than LA is. So, that was, and he's written an editorial that hopefully the paper will publish to in that regard.
Did he want to move here?
He did, I guess.
It was a great for you to offer him a job.
Well, he wants to come back and do the video projection again next year.
Actually, Patrick lives here in Orlando now.
Oh, he does? Okay. I didn't know that. All right. Well, thank you, Devon. Any further business, come before the CRA?
No further business, Mayor.
That being the case, we will adjourn the CRA meeting, reconvene the city council meeting, which puts us on new business item C2, number four. Commissioner Diamond.
Thank you. We talked about this during the agenda review meeting, and this is an item to approve a number of variances for a bank that'll be rehabilitating the old Checker's Restaurant on South Orange Avenue. And I've worked with the staff on this, appreciate their help, and I would like to add an additional condition to the conditions of approval that came from the board of zoning adjustment. And this condition, let me have to read it again, is to require a 2.5-foot wide concrete strip to be constructed immediately adjacent to the western property line along the extent of the FDOT Orange Avenue right-of-way/side walk area. And the intent of this condition is to enhance the available pedestrian area, to increase it from five and a half feet to eight feet as an interim solution to enhance pedestrian mobility and safety prior to the full implementation of the Orange Michigan Vision Plan streetscape.
All right, let's do this right procedurally. Commissioner Diamond offers a motion on the agenda item that is before us. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, so the agenda item is properly before us. Now, Commissioner Diamond offers a motion to amend as he has just described. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Linum, so we will take up the amendment first, all in favor of the motion to amend as previously described indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion to amend carries. Now, the main motion as amended, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. That brings us to, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Flynn, are you here on that as supporting that?
Yes, I'm in support of the motion.
Okay, thank you very much. If you want to speak on it, you're free to. Okay.
No, I'd just like to add that the bank is very happy to work with the city, and I'd like to echo your comments on the staff's tremendous work on this project. I think the bank is really bringing a wonderful, presenting a wonderful project and really enhanced the neighborhood there. So, again, thanks to the staff and to the commission here. Thank you.
Thanks for going in there and fixing it up and being there and helping to re-energize that area.
Okay, we are on a hearing. Number one, and the next item is a public hearing on the amending resolution for the Paramount on Lake Eola Special Assessment. The hearing was advertised in the Sentinel, Orlando Sentinel, on April 28th, 2011, and I would ask the clerk to read the title of the resolution for the record. Madam Clerk.
A resolution amending that certain amended and restated final assessment resolution the city council, the city of Orlando, Florida, previously adopted by city council on June 19th, 2006, bearing documentary number 060619701, amending the definition of special assessment areas specially benefited by the project, amending the methodology and the unit of measurement for assessing the capital cost of the project and other related costs against the real property specially benefited thereby, providing for the reallocation of the assessment, reaffirming the amended and restated final assessment resolution to the extent not amended hereby, providing for certain other authorizations, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Ings. We will now open the public hearing to consider the adoption of the resolution amending the amended and restated final assessment resolution for the Paramount on Lake Eola Special Assessment. The primary purpose of the amendment is to change the unit of measurement for allocating the assessment from tax parcels to a square footage basis. This modified allocation method will result in a more equitable apportionment of the assessment. Do we have anyone from the public that wishes to appear and comment on the resolution? Then we will close the public hearing. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and the motion carries. Move to hearings ordinances on second reading, number one, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city of Orlando, Florida, amending an ordinance of the city of Orlando, Florida, vacating, closing, and abandoning a portion of South Street between South Roslin Avenue and South Magnolia Avenue by reducing the area of abandoned right-of-way, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners.
Mayor, I mentioned during the agenda meeting that I want to abstain on this. Do I need to announce that again?
Go ahead and mention it again, it's fine.
Thanks. I'm going to abstain on this item. It involves, or it could impact First Methodist Church, where I'm an active member, and my wife's employed, and to avoid the appearance of a conflict of interest, I am going to abstain on this item. Thank you.
Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city of Orlando, Florida, designating certain land along Cimarron Boulevard, generally from Broche Road on the north to East Grant Street on the south, as within the Cimarron Boulevard Special Plan overlay district on the city's official zoning map series, and rezoning certain land within the district from R1A to O1 on the city's official zoning map series, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Was that Commissioner Ortiz? Motion maker, Commissioner Stewart, the seconder. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. And that concludes the official business of the council today, but we do-